Brainerd City Council, it is Monday, May 19th, 2025, 7:30 PM in council chambers. Tony, please call the roll.
Chezak.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Stunek.
Yep.
Jaeger.
Yep.
Erickson.
President.
Bevins.
Here.
Oday.
Here.
Bado.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next we have the approval of the agenda. Looking for a motion.
So move, Jaeger.
Second.
Motion by Jaeger, second by Stunek. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, same sign. We have an agenda. Number five, we have the consent calendar. This is a notice to the public that all matters listed are considered routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the time the council votes on the motion to be adopted by roll call. Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second. Motion by Chezak, second by Erickson. Any discussion? Seeing none, go to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Against?
Resolution.
Oh, oh. All right, Tony, call the roll.
Chezak.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Jaeger.
Yep.
Erickson.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes.
Oday.
Yes, that passes. Next, we have public forum. This is time allocated for citizens to bring matters not on the agenda to the attention of the council. Time limits may be imposed. As usual, we'll try to keep it under three minutes. If you're here for something that you've already spoke on in the past, I recommend just letting the new people come up first. You can still come up and speak. Hopefully, you have new information compared to last time if you already spoke as well. But at this time, if there's anybody here that would like to address the council, please come forward. Please just give us your name and address.
So, my name is Pam Bolio. Address 2540 130th Street, Southwest Pillager. However, the seven organizations I volunteer with are all located in Brainerd. So I come tonight with more of a curiosity. So I know Brainerd has somebody or a phone number that you can call if you see, like, a stray animal, or a wounded animal, or an abandoned animal. And somebody will come and take that animal and take it to a shelter where it will get food, water, and have safe place to sleep. So my curiosity is why is not that extended to human beings? You know, if we do it for the animals in this area, why is it not available to human beings? Now, I realize I'm not going to get an answer tonight, but I would like for the council to just be thinking about that. That if that's something we offer to animals, pets sometimes, people abandon them, whatever it is. The other thing I would like to say is that last time when I was here, I was hurt by a comment that was made that we were entertainment. And I guess the people that I know that came here last time, they came because they had a decision made by the council that was really heavy on their hearts. We did not come to be entertainment. Thank you.
Thank you. Please come up.
My name is Randy Wickham. I live at 710 South Eighth Street in Brainerd, Minnesota. I've spoken in front of the council, not the last time, but the time before, when we were hoping to get a better outcome for the shelter being open. And I took the time to email every single one of you, and I only got one response. I'm not, I'm not emailing to start issues. I want to have a actual conversation and figure out what we can do to make sure that our housed community feels safe enough to have a safe place for our unhoused community. These are the most vulnerable of our population. And I, I know it's uncomfortable, and it's like, there's not the best things that come about it, but also, where, where are we supposed to, where are they supposed to go? I'm really hoping that you guys take into consideration that it, like, the first night the shelter closed, it was raining and it was cold. I'm guessing every single one of you had a warm place, a warm bed to sleep in. And I, I, I had a really hard time sleeping that night because some of these people, I've known them a long time. I haven't been homeless with the, the people that are currently homeless in Brainerd, but I've been homeless in Brainerd, and we, we band together as a community. If one of us only has one tarp, there's six, seven, eight, nine people under one tarp. I, I don't understand what the problem is for keeping a place, just a, a building open to have a warm place for people to stay. I'm really hoping that you guys can email me back, and we can start a conversation and figure out what we can do to make sure you guys feel more comfortable, what we can, some changes we can implement, just to have a safe, warm place for people to sleep at night. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council?
My name is Emma Needham. I addressed the council last time. My address is 1017 13th Avenue Northeast. I come with a greater sense of urgency. My family's recently experienced some major medical crises. I've had a critically ill toddler, she just turned three in March, and has something called immunotrombocytopenia, which none of us were expecting or ready to take on when she was diagnosed at the end of January. When I sat down with my family's financials, you know, and I'm married and I have two children, I work, my spouse works, and we have private insurance through his employer. It's very good insurance, and yet our medical bills are still mounting. And when I sat down and crunched numbers for what we can afford right now and what we can't afford right now, even with selling our home and most of the things in it, it will not completely get us out of the debt that we're in for medical, even with insurance. And then if we sell our home, where are we to go? We're lucky in the fact that we have community and family in this area that would never let us and our children go homeless, but other people in this community do not have that luxury. And it appalls me to stand before this council today and to understand what those at the council really are willing to do for community members such as myself if I were to end up in a position of being homeless. I think there's an assumption that somebody else is taking care of that, that that's somebody else's responsibility, but nobody makes it in the world without support. And I ask that you listen to the people who are in this room because these are the people that support you to be in this position that you're in. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come up?
Bill Weir, 5823 Laverne Circle Baxter here representing the Bridge on 7th. We've talked a lot about the Bridge on 7th over the last couple of months. The community has spoken to each and every one of you, either through phone call, email, or in person. We, I have also talked to a lot of you as well. One thing that strikes my, huge in my mind is, once again, we're only pushing for all year round because of the ordinance that was passed last year. And that ordinance passed last year is investing in the punishment. If you're going to invest in punishment, there needs to be some investment into prevention. Now, our shelter is not, you know, in any, by any means going to end homelessness in any way, shape, or form, but it is a tool that can be used to help people get back on their feet. That tool is not there, it's going to make it a lot harder for people to get back on their feet. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up.
Matt Carlgaard, 16236 Birchwood Lane. I was here four weeks ago and addressed you guys. I'm just here, I'm a board member on Bridges of Hope. We've reached out several times and have gotten a little, I know Mr. Jaeger has responded to a few of Janet's conversations, but we've, a lot of times, we've reached out and we haven't heard back. So we'd just like to get, you know, a conversation going. We want to understand the reasons why you guys said no to the shelter. It's just hasn't, it's, without understanding those reasons, we've debunked some of the things that have been said, you know, the, there's 119 police calls, which is dwarfed by the number of police calls in, in Brainerd in a, in a year. The public library gets four more calls, four times as many calls per month, or three times as many calls per month. So just asking you guys to come back to the table with us. We're going to keep coming back until it gets back on the agenda, until we can have a discussion where we, where we can have a, you know, understand the reasons and try to work something out. Because we, this is an issue that is really important to all of us. There's people sleeping in the rain, like they said. I'm not going to repeat the things that have been said, but it kills me every night when it's raining out and I know there's people sleeping outside and they're worried about getting, the police, you know, getting arrested because they're having to find a place to sleep that maybe is illegal that night. So let's, let's figure it out together, guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone online, if you're online, would like to address the council, please press star Anyone, Sean? No? I'll ask one more time. If there's anyone that would like to come up, please do so now. No? All right, we will close the public forum. It is 7:40 PM. Thank you all. If you're just here for the public forum, I'll give you a minute to clear out if you want to stay. That's more than fine, too. Next, we have number seven, that's presentations. I don't think we have any presentations set up, but it's still on my agenda. No presentations. All right, so number eight, we have council committee reports. First up, we have Personnel and Finance Committee Chairman, Gabe Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have four items on our agenda tonight, the first of which is to approve an RFP for custodial services. And the motion out of committee is, I move to direct staff to begin the RFP process for custodial services, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stunek.
Our current custodial service contract ends June 30th, so we'd like to have another two-year contract in place by July 1st, out of interruption of service.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Same sign. Motion passes. Chairman Johnson.
Thank you. Next up is, I move to authorize city staff to work in partnership with the YMCA leadership and existing YMCA advisors to explore the feasibility of funding a new city pool facility as part of the YMCA's proposed capital project and approve an allocation not to exceed $5,000 to support the RFP development, and I so move.
I'll second that, and I request, Mr. Chair, that the entire council see the presentation from the YMCA. I know it's slightly out of context, the way we normally do things, but I really think it's beneficial that we take a moment.
Right now?
Right now.
Oh, I probably should have before the motion. Sorry, Kelly. But yeah, I was hoping, I invited Shane up here to, hoping he would give the whole council.
Do you want to have that in your motion? Friendly amendment to just, there's no?
Does need to be part of the motion.
Okay.
No, we can, you can.
Just for information.
Yeah, you can make us vote now and then let him talk, or just let him talk and then we vote.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Does it make a difference to you, Shane?
Just so you know, I'll be recusing myself from this as I sit on the Governance Committee for YMCA.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
If, I, I mean, this is, this is like a preliminary motion to get things, the ball rolling. I, I don't object to seeing a presentation, but could I watch the presentation on YouTube to see it at your meeting if we don't do it right now? And, and what is it, five minutes?
We didn't have it, Jeff.
Oh, I'm sorry, when did you guys see it then?
We, we got an abbreviated, Shane was down in our committee meeting and spoke for a couple of minutes. You could view that on YouTube absolutely, but we didn't receive a full presentation. I was hoping he could take five, five or more minutes up here.
Their meeting was 7:15 to 7:30, so I'm guessing it's pretty quick. That's fine. So we have a motion by Johnson, second by Bevins. Any more discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Same sign. Motion passes. Shane, would you like to come up?
I would love to, thank you.
Just introduce yourself and obviously who you're representing.
Honorable counsel, Mayor, thank you for having me tonight, here to speak about the Brainerd Family YMCA. My name is Shane Riffel, and I'm the CEO over at the Y. And there's a lot going on that I'd like to update you on. Before I go on, though, I want to remind you the history of the YMCA. We've been in the Brainerd area since 1889. The Northern Pacific Railroad invited us in to serve a critical community need. Today, we're still serving those needs, but the building is outdated, is falling apart, and we need to transform the Y. We believe it can transform this community, so we're making this request tonight. We've also been in the current location since 1967, and you're aware of a lot of the challenges that we faced. We've had the COVID epidemic pandemic. We had a cracked pool. We had a roof flood in 2020 that shut us down, and then most recently, a car drove through our daycare center. And it's time that we transform the YMCA. In fact, Witseth did a site study for us back in 2021 and said that the building is end of life, and it would cost over $16 million to get the building up to operational standards. At that time, the board decided that it was time for a capital campaign, that the Brainerd community not only needed, but deserved, a YMCA that can continue to change lives. And we're here to do that. So I wanted to update you on the process that we follow to get us where we are today. After we authorized the start of a capital campaign, we brought on a consultant, Grow, and we did a real estate app, asset optimization study, and we ended up looking at about five different locations where a YMCA could end up. And we ran them through about five different metrics and basically concluded that 602 Oak Street is the ideal place for a YMCA in this community for a lot of different reasons. It sits on what I call the seam, where we serve people of all different income levels. It's very walkable, it's next to the high school, and then it also sits in a distressed economic tract, which allows us to seek new markets tax credits as part of our funding stack. If you come by the YMCA any afternoon, you're going to see that it's vibrant with kids coming for after-school care, kids coming in to improve their health and shooting baskets, they're lifting weights, and they're doing something productive during that idle time that's probably the most risky time of day for kids in our community, and we're there for them. So we did that study, and we've been, I've been committed all along, and I've known a lot of you for a really long time. I've been committed to making sure that the Y stays where it is, and this study showed that, that we should do that. From then on, we brought on another consultant called Donor by Design, and we did a feasibility study. And we tested the notion of raising about $52 million as part of a comprehensive campaign, which includes not only the main campus facility, but a new childcare center, which we've actually raised the money and completed, at 703 Oak Street, right across the street from the Y, updating Camp Fanasic, and also building a full multi-field indoor sports complex on the CLC campus. We've gone through the process with them, and we're actually on their master plan with the state. And after we hope to finish this project, that'll be the next step in, in what we want to do. I have two kids, and as I was saying earlier, in sports, our kids always take about half the season to catch up from kids that are down in the cities because they have indoor domes complexes. We're just as good athletes, but our kids just don't have the access to that type of complex to help us compete. And we're committed to giving kids that resource down the road. So where we went after that, and the results of the feasibility study were that we should first focus on the full facility, and they believe with strong confidence that we can raise between 30 to 35 million dollars to get that rolling. Concurrently with that, we brought on a team from the University of Minnesota Extension and did an economic feasibility study, because I believe that the Y is here not only just for mission, but also we contribute to the local economics of, of the community. We know that by building a new YMCA in that location, it's going to bring in about $51.4 million in economic activity, direct, indirect, and induced. And I did, or I know Nick and Mike did include that study as part of your package, so if you have any questions about that later, feel free to ask. So we've been checking the boxes off. We've been building our team, and it's not just me in charge of this. We have a full team of professionals, consultants, and volunteers that are standing with me to make sure that this gets done. We have a capital planning committee, an owner's rep, Tom Walkle's with Orb Management, who's done a lot of work in the community. We hired construction design teams and stayed local with Norson and Witseth. And then we've also recruited our volunteer leadership cabinet, Jamie Tajie with Hotels, Resorts, and Leisure, and Kristy Westbrook with CTC, and Mike Bjorkness are co-chairs on that. And then lastly, we've also brought on professionals to help us with the new market tax credits, which is fairly complex. So that's where we are, but it also involves three core partners, and we need them to put that capital stack together so that we can make this happen. And in my 33 years at the Y, I've seen a lot of city-wise partnerships that have been, not only met expectations, but exceeded expectations. In Boise, Idaho, we had a partnership with a city where they funded the Aquatic Center, which is where this idea originated. And then I've talked with people individually to see what, how they felt about it, and it's been overwhelmingly met with positivity. You know, we live in the, the state of 10,000 lakes, and we live right next to the Mississippi River, and yet a lot of kids don't know how to swim, and drowning is the second-leading cause of accidental death from kids about two to 14 years old. Yet it can largely be prevented by getting kids into a swimming pool, by providing access and quality swim lessons, and we believe that we can do that. So we've reached out, we've asked for permission to continue working with staff, and then also to put together an RFP. There are consultants that specialize in working with nonprofits and cities to figure out how this funding can look. So that was the ask for tonight. It really excites me. You can see, this is a rendering of what it could like, and you look like, blah. And you notice that, you know, it's the Brainerd City Aquatic Center, but it also has a look that honors our roots as, as a railroad YMCA. So I'll leave this up here and close with that. You can probably tell I'm pretty excited. I've mentioned earlier, I've been with the Y for 33 years. This is going to take me to the end of my career, and I want nothing more than the kids and the families in the community to experience what a YMCA can be.
Thank you, Shane. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Riffel? Doesn't look like it. Thanks a lot, Shane.
Thank you for having me. Appreciate it.
All right, back to Chairman Johnson.
All right, we still have two items on our agenda. Thank you, Mr. President. The next item on our agenda is ratify the hiring of Trevor Hines as technology specialist, and the motion is to ratify the hiring of Trevor Hines for technology specialist position effective May 21st, and further that he be placed on step one of the technology specialist wage grid, $30.07 per hour, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stunek. Johnson?
We had 24 applicants for this position, so people are still interested in working for the city of Brainerd.
All right. Any more discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Same sign. Motion passes. Chairman Johnson?
End of report.
Thank you, Chairman Johnson. Moving on to 8B Safety and Public Works Committee Chairman, Tad Erickson.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. We have four items on our agenda, the first of which is review proposed code enforcement ordinance. Motion coming out of committee is to approve proposed code enforcement ordinance to allow active code enforcement along major thoroughfares and near city parks, and remove certain language to enable staff to actively enforce code enforcement en route to inspections and other complaints. And I so move.
Second.
By Erickson, second by Chezak. Do you have more discussion?
Just that our current code does allow active code enforcement. It's primarily on a complaint-based driven basis. However, this would allow staff to perform active code enforcement along these certain major thoroughfares, such as Business 371, Highway 210, and as stated, around city parks, as well as on, on their way to other non-complaint, such as inspections.
Okay. Any more discussion? Mr. Johnson?
So, just a question on if we're taking a more of an active approach in certain direct areas. Who do we expect will be doing this active code enforcement? Who is going to be out driving around, looking around the neighborhoods, the parks, the?
Mr. Kramvik?
It'd be our building inspector and code enforcement officer, which is Jason Stockinger.
The same guy that has to inspect 2,000 houses every year?
He, he'd have capacity to do it.
He has capacity?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Same sign. Motion passes. Chairman Erickson?
All right, thank you. The next item on our agenda is to approve agreement, construction surveying on an as-needed basis. Motion coming out of committee is to approve the attached agreement with SEH to perform construction surveying on the construction projects, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Erickson, second by Chezak. Discussion?
Just to reiterate what was mentioned in committee is that we have currently 11 projects, two of which we're doing in-house. Typically, this would be done by the, the contractors, but for those two that we're doing in-house, staff would normally do that if we just had one project, but having two, this surveying exceeds the capacity, at, at current capacity, and so they're wanting to do this via contractor. SEH has been selected.
All right. More discussion? Seeing none, go to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Same sign. Motion passes. Chairman Erickson?
All right, our third item, approval of front street flag poles to be modified. Motion coming out of committee is to improve the flag poles with four devices to raise and lower the flags, with five hardwired lighting units for a total cost of $825, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Erickson, second by Chezak. Chairman?
Yeah, discussion, just to mention, obviously, this has come before us before. It was brought to our, our attention that some, certain flag poles downtown were not able to be raised or lowered, and we wanted to handle that appropriately. In order to do that, we wanted to equip them with appropriate devices to raise and lower them and have them properly lit. With this, we're able to purchase these devices, and BPU has offered to help install those and be able to accomplish that for just under $1,000, so.
Excellent. Thank you. Any more discussion? Johnson?
Yeah, question. I know $825 doesn't sound like a lot of money in a government budget, but what fund do we expect this money to be coming out of?
Mr. Habegars?
It would be coming out of our streets budget for just general purposes. They take care of the streets, so we wanted to come out of there. Our, the other discussion was coming out of the parks, but because it's attached to the light poles and with streets, it was just, we just decided the streets.
So the construction fund?
No, just our operating.
Is that streets' operating budget?
And I'll be discussing with Connie to, to make sure that we're compliant with everything.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more discussion?
Just that I'm happy to see the flags remain downtown. I like that look down there.
Thank you. All right, seeing no more discussion, let's go to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Same sign. Motion passes. Chairman Erickson?
All right, our last item, discussion and review of new city ordinance of street performers/ buskers. Motion coming out of committee is to direct staff to modify the draft ordinance with council comments and submit ordinances for final approval at the next council meeting. And so that recommendation for us to have that discussion, and there's a few things that staff would like to point out as well, so I so move.
Second.
Motion by Erickson, second by Chezak. More discussion?
Yeah, so as, as was mentioned, staff had pointed out, and we discussed, staff pointed out three, and we discussed four items, and just wanted to get additional council feedback for, for this ordinance. The first item there is, one, should busking or street performing be allowed in specific locations in the downtown area? Should staff put together a specific map? Number two, should busking slash street performing be allowed in parks? Three, what should the annual fee be? Yeah, so as was mentioned, staff had pointed out, and we discussed, staff pointed out three, and we discussed four items, and just wanted to get additional council feedback for this ordinance. The first item there is, one, should busking or street performing be allowed in specific locations in the downtown area? Should staff put together a specific map? Number two, should busking slash street performing be allowed in parks? Three, what should the annual fee be? And a couple options there. So, staff, again, just looking for some additional feedback before drafting this final ordinance and bringing it back, and so, hoping to have that discussion.
Thank you, Chairman Erickson. Johnson?
How do we differentiate busking from busking adjacent activities that might not be actual busking, like, say, somebody outside of a pizzeria or an insurance company flipping a sign around? I don't think that's busking, but it's pretty close. How do we determine what's what?
Do you have an answer for that, Mr. Havigars?
Right, so there's a couple different variations to that. One is private property, or if it's just on the street corner, now it is considered an activity that it could be done, and it may fall underneath that if that's what we so choose. In my opinion, I think it would be, fall underneath there, and that's, I think there might be some other discussions. James, do you have anything?
I just note, some of the items that Mr. Johnson had mentioned, a lot of times falls on private property. Think of like the taxes, a lot of times you're doing it in the parking lot, but yeah, certainly it could fall under if it is occurring on public property.
Oh, yeah, the Statue of Liberty monkey, that is totally on the sidewalk. That is, that's busking?
I have no idea.
Monkey busking.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Johnson. Anyone else?
Could I, could I ask, Gabe, what was the example you used about a sign outside there? I didn't, I didn't understand what you said there.
Oh, Jeff, it's common nowadays for pizza places or insurance companies, cell phone-type businesses, to pay somebody to stand outside with a sign, with an arrow, trying to direct people to their business.
Tax, okay.
Yeah.
Got it, thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Erickson, yep.
To, and I might, if I could call on Councilman Czach, to the fourth item we had discussed, to I believe it had to do with signage?
Yeah, in the proposed draft, it indicates the sign recommended size is 24 inches by 18 inches, or, they actually had two different sizes. I think the staff, I followed up, they followed up and said their preference was 24 by 8. I'd rather see an 18 by 12 inch side limit, just because it's a sidewalk event, I don't think you need to be advertising from, you know, people driving by. It's bigger the sign, you know? That was just my thought, if we were gonna draft this, I'd rather see it 18 by 12 as opposed to 24 by 18. Of course, that's our decision, so, just one of the things I wanted to do. And then, I, I'm kinda curious as to, if we're gonna pick locations, I, I don't know how we do that, and I was, I think Mike, maybe, and I don't wanna speak for him, I think he indicated that be his preference, he talked about the significant amount of work, right? If you want to, could you weigh in on that, for staff?
Right, this will require some staff work, not only from the police station and the police chief, but also from just staff issuing these licenses, and then following up, making sure that they're following the ordinance, and, you know, handling complaints, input, and so forth, so there will be some significant time allotted to this task. And if I could also just mention regarding Councilman Johnson's comment, it could be indicated in there, and this may be a good clarification, is, is it advertising or entertainment? Busking is entertainment, so we could indicate that within the ordinance, that, to talk about that difference.
Thank you. Chairman Erickson?
I just wanted to add to, I think I like Councilman Czach's suggestion about reducing the size of the signage, and I think that that kind of gets to Councilman Johnson's concerns about, you know, what's advertising, what's... And I'm a little leery on the suggestion about the content of the sign, and we need to kinda watch out about, you know, we can't regulate the content of the sign, First Amendment issues, but the size, location, and things like that, we can affect. And I think, you know, reducing the size of the signage that's allowed would help alleviate that potential advertising difference.
Chairman? Anyone else? My question is, does this only pertain to people that are asking for donations? Like, they're performing with an open hat on the ground? Is that what this is for, or just people that wanna get out and play the guitar on the sidewalk? Is that, does that go into this as well?
They can ask for a tip jar, and, but other individuals, they don't have, they won't either, but it's just about performing and having entertainment downtown in an area.
So, my question is, if somebody wants to grab their guitar out of their music room and go out in the park and play music, that technically would fall under this, then? If this doesn't just pertain to people that are putting a hat on the ground or a bucket and performing for donations, that's, is, am I wrong on that?
So, restate your question again?
Well, how, if we're not limiting this, this fee schedule and all these regulations to people that are only doing this for a donation or trying to raise money, then it would pertain to somebody who just wants to play acoustic guitar somewhere out in the park, or walking down the sidewalk. I, I don't wanna see people getting arrested for...
Right.
For playing a kazoo on a sidewalk, or...
Well, maybe.
Well, depends how good they are at it, I guess, but...
What I would just indicate in that is that it, is it there for entertainment or self-reflection, self-entertainment in a park, but if it's there for entertainment, now you're busking, and we could clarify that more specifically in the ordinance also.
Okay. Yeah, 'cause I would probably just say I'm self-reflecting if I was hassled at all playing my kazoo on a corner, but, you have anything else?
Also, just regarding the actual locations, we do have some restaurants downtown that want a specific table outside the restaurant for, you know...
Chief?
Yeah, just wanted to speak to the intent that was mentioned. That would make enforcement extremely difficult if now we have to look at something as subjective as intent, so I guess my recommendation would be, you know, activity-based and maybe leave tent, intent out of it as far as entertainment versus self-reflection, or...
Okay.
It'd be challenging for officers to determine what their intent is.
Right. Well, we do have individuals that already walk down the street performing, multiple.
Every night.
Every day. So, I don't want the police to have to intervene with people who are just doing something like that, so I'm a little confused at the, at the idea, I guess, unless it just pertains to people who are sitting somewhere in front of a business or in a public place with a donation bucket. I guess, that's what I saw this as, but it seems like maybe that's not what it is, but maybe we can clarify that as we go. So, Erickson, could you please clarify the motion before we vote?
Yep, happy to. So, the motion coming out of committee is to direct staff to modify the draft ordinance with council comments and submit ordinance, an ordinance for final approval at the next council meeting.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Bevins, did you have some...
Yeah, I just said two things. One, this seems like something that would almost be better off just making an event application for specific individuals that wanna do it. I don't see people lining up to do it at an extensive rate, but also, if we are gonna talk parks, that is the jurisdiction of the park board, so that, those have, that has to go before them. I'm not in favor of it, just because if it's wide open in that you just get a license and now every day I go to the park, I got a guy trumpeting in my ear, not really what I'm looking for, so, but that definitely has to go before the park board, they have to make that decision.
Thank you. I'll say, I'll support this motion, but I don't know if I'll support the ordinance going forward. Depending on what staff comes back with, I'll, I'll read it and see where it's at.
One question in procedure, if I could?
Go ahead, Czach.
Is this supposed to come back for the final approval? Would that, do you have to have a reading on this?
First and second reading.
Correct, yes. Would have to have a reading.
Okay.
This is just a draft form, there's, there's a lot of discussion, there's a lot of interest in this, and so, yeah, that's why we're...
Typically, you can modify at a first reading, but not at a second.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Bevins?
Thank you. I'm gonna vote against this motion, Mr. Chair. I think we're fixing something that's not broken. I really think, I mean, if somebody's being an annoyance or a nuisance, or prohibiting commerce on private property, that, those are whole different problems, but, I mean, we have people playing guitars all, I live right across from Gregory Park, I, it's, we're fixing a problem that isn't a problem, I think, and we're gonna create more problems, especially for law enforcement. I really hesitate, I really think we're going down a slippery slope and trying to regulate, over-regulate something, that nobody's, one person's asked for, and I've been here for 23 years, so, and I don't think there's ever been a problem, so, that's, I'm gonna vote against it.
Johnson?
That was gonna be my last question, but Kelly covered it well, like, what problem are we solving with this? Like, what have we identified as a problem that needs an ordinance to fix it as a solution? It seems like we're just drafting an ordinance because we have nothing better to do. So, I think I'm with Kelly. I'm gonna vote no, because I'm with Mike, that I don't mind going forward and putting an ordinance and reading it, but I don't think I would support it at the end until I can identify what's the problem, and what are we solving by drafting this ordinance, so I'll be a no.
I might switch my vote to no after those comments, 'cause I do agree with both of you. I don't want staff to waste time on coming up with a new ordinance if we're just gonna shoot it down in two weeks. So, I think staff, if this does not go forward, I think you could keep this in a file, and if it does become an issue a year from now, two years from now, we can always revisit the issue, but I think, Mr. Jaeger, do you have...
Yeah, I'm convinced, way too much career here, I'll be voting no also.
Thank you. Mr. Czach?
Um, this came before us, I think, at least for sure last meeting, maybe before that, but what was the rationale behind it, again? We didn't have an ordinance, and there's people requesting this, and we didn't know how to have, regulate it? Is that what the issue was?
Correct. So, if we don't have an ordinance, we don't have, we can't provide any direction. We can't provide, we can't indicate, you can and cannot do it here or there, we can't, we can't, and maybe Joe can comment a little bit more, but if we don't have an ordinance, we don't have any jurisdiction to even tell them any direction. Joe, did I get that right?
Mr. Langill?
I mean, yeah, that's, I think Mike stated it correctly, it, but that, of course, begs the initial question of, do you want to? I mean, that's a policy issue for all of you folks up there, is whether there is an issue here to regulate. I mean, he's right, there's no way to deal with buskers if they start showing up en masse on Main Street, but you guys have to decide whether that's a big enough issue to warrant the regulatory structure that's being created.
Thank you, Mr. Langill. I think everybody's said their piece, but...
So, so, Mr. O'Day?
Mr. Czach.
So, if we don't have this ordinance, and I'm leaning towards Kelly and Gabe's idea here of just saying no to this, but, if somebody could come down, what do we say if they got a small sign, and they're on the sidewalk, and they're beating a drum, and, I mean, this is all what-if, what-if, I guess until that happens, we can, we can always then proceed with an ordinance, but it hasn't happened yet, you haven't said no to an individual, they can do what they want right now, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Have they done anything based on you telling them what you've told them at City Hall?
I have indicated that we don't have an ordinance, and therefore, we can't provide any direction, and he just indicated that he's here to provide entertainment, and he will be very cordial to the local business individuals.
Thank you very much.
As long as they're not breaking any current laws that we have, or ordinances that we have, then they can continue to exercise their freedom. Anyone else? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. Remember, if you're voting yes, it is to move forward and have staff continue building this ordinance. If you're voting no, that means we're going to drop the subject for now, we can always bring it up at a different time, so...
Do you roll call, Mr. President?
Yes, Tony, please call the roll.
Czach?
No.
Johnson?
No.
Stunek?
No.
Jaeger?
Nope.
Erickson?
No.
Bevins?
Nope.
O'Day?
No, and that fails.
Busk away.
Busking is allowed.
Busted busker.
Uh, Chairman Erickson?
Yeah, we just made about $10,000 in staff time.
End of report.
Thank you, Chairman Erickson. Moving on, next we have number nine, unfinished business. 9A, we have the new city administrator report form. City Administrator Broyles, go ahead and take this one.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, this is kind of the canary in the coal mine, so I'm looking forward to getting feedback from the mayor and the city council. So, this is kind of my intent, this is kind of the format that I'm intending on following, unless I'm directed otherwise, but what I'm anticipating right now is, once a month, so every other meeting, roughly, I'm going to give a written monthly report, and I'm trying to find substantive items, but not be redundant with what the directors are already providing, so that will kind of evolve over time. So, I wanna provide the narrative, the written report, once a month, but every, every single council meeting, I will show the suspense tracker, so we can see the current status updates on all the different projects that staff is working on, so, I'll just go through it briefly for this one, and I don't think that, I don't think the word "busker" is in this, in this report, so that's a good thing. So, basically, I'm just going to, I'll just talk very briefly. Community engagement, I'll just put some items of note that I've done throughout the, throughout the month, people I've met with, things that are going on, and then I'm gonna probably give some updates across the functional area, so try to touch on each functional area, and see what is perhaps substantive, or something that might be of, of high interest to the council. I probably won't, I'm not gonna obviously read this, but I'll try to hit some of the highlights, if I think there's something worth mentioning, I will hit the highlights. So, basically, you can see, I have a little excerpt on there, on finance, the audits going on. I did not follow up, I know the session ended today, so I don't know what happened with the, I know there's some discussion down in St. Paul about reducing LGA by 20 million, haven't heard anything yet to see where that happened in the session, if that's still, if that went any further or not. I'll just go to the next page. Community development, we got groundbreaking, groundbreaking for Country Manor is scheduled for June 10th, so that should be a, a big day for public, I'm just gonna combine public works, utilities, parks, and transit, and as, as this grows and matures over time, if I need to move things around, I certainly will. I was approached by John Forrest from Rotary, he had some questions about Rotary Park. Basically, this is still at the staff level, it's not really ripe yet for council. Staff is talking about, basically, Rotary Park, that we were approached by them, we just bought the Roberts property, a lot of that property is undevelopable, it's adjacent to Rotary Park, Rotary Park says, hey, if you guys, if the city wanted to donate that to Rotary Park, that would qualify us for regional, to apply for regional recognition as a park, which could open doors to funding. Staff between public utilities and public works, they're just talking through that right now, so more to follow on that, if, if we think that's something that needs to come before the council. We had the briefing from the YMCA executive director, we talked about that. Fire, just of note, very recently, there was a request for assistance that went out, I believe statewide, and Tim Holmes, Chief Holmes, sent a crew, and they have sent, they have gone and since returned, they were north of Two Harbors, helping out some of the fires up north. No, no cost to the city, that's gonna be reimbursed by DNR, so they have already deployed, and they're already back, and so that was a great training opportunity for some of Chief Holmes' crew. Technology, just a couple personnel updates, the GIS specialist, you saw it today, he begins today, the tech specialist begins on Wednesday, and the network administrator, we're anticipating mid-June. Airport, the significant thing, airport director resigned on May 7th. Airport commission is working through that process to, to advertise for an interim, and eventually a permanent, so more to follow on that. Let's see, I guess the last thing I'll mention is, as far as bargaining unit updates, the Teamsters, which is the police lieutenants and sergeants. The final issues that need to be certified, we got those to BMS, we got our final positions to BMS, so we met those deadlines, so now we'll just have to select an arbitrator, or the process, we'll have to select an arbitrator, and we'll go through that process, and let that'll kind of run its course. So, that's kind of the way I'm gonna do that, and then the very last thing, you'll see suspense tracker and nothing, and that just rolls right into the suspense tracker, which is that, I think it's probably a three or four page right now, and this is, this is a manifestation of the conversations we had at the, at the work session, if there's things that you guys like on here, if there's things you don't like, if we for some reason omitted something or forgot something, I'll be watching this more closely, this will develop over time. All of these different projects are assigned to an action officer, which is typically gonna be me or one of the directors, and they will go in through task manager and provide updates, and they'll be, they'll populate the spreadsheet. Again, I guess that's kind of red. Where I come from, red is bad, I would prefer to think of red, yellow, and green as red being kind of the highest priority, yellow is a little bit more on the horizon, and green is perhaps a little bit further out on the horizon, not that they are less important, but we'll just, we'll resource these things appropriately. We gave percent complete, we gave in progress. Companies, I don't know if that's a default, I would probably just put action officer[1716.73] I would probably just put action officer or something in there. But is this something that is useful, useful to the council? Do you guys like it? Do you not like it? Um, this is a great opportunity to provide staff feedback, um, how we can make this better going forward.
Thank you, Administrator Broyles. And, yeah, questions that he had, I would love to hear answers from the council. My big question is, where would you guys like this on the agenda? Uh, is it, is it fine where it's at with unfinished business and go through it just like we are now? Would you rather have it somewhere like consent calendar? Would you rather have it during staff reports and maybe, maybe make a specific item like we have for the mayor's report under the administrator's report? Um, we can do it a number of ways, but I, in general, I like the format that Administrator Broyles has come up with and I have no problem with it. Just where do you guys want it? Bevins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also agree. I think this is fantastic. I really think tonight was good because we learned from Administrator Broyles where, you know, what the purpose and how this is laid out. I really doesn't, I really think it doesn't need to be commented on. And if it does, if there's an item on this that needs to be commented on, it should be pulled off and put on the agenda. Otherwise, I enjoyed reading it, certainly didn't mind taking the time this evening, but I really think it's just part of the administrator's report. Let us read it. Again, if it's something that, that, that required action, then it doesn't belong on this. It's got to come off and go on the agenda. That's my, that's my point. Rather than, rather than going through stuff that may not be necessary to have business items.
Yep, not a business item.
Okay. Thank you. Chazak?
O'Day, um, um, our previous administrator had her, hers on her staff reports, uh, which we find, uh, James and, uh, Sean and, uh, I think our police have theirs on there this month. Um, uh, thank you to those folks, but I, I think that'd be a great place for it and we can all read it and then I guess bring back questions. Uh, I would like to ask Administrator Broyles if he would, uh, entertain giving us a little update from time to time on his Sourcewell involvement. That's always interested me to see what's going on there from your perspective. So if that's something you might consider, I'd appreciate it. Um, other than that, uh, I, I agree with Kelly. I don't think it needs to be a discussion item and it's, if it's something we can read, um, I'd look forward to it monthly, so.
Mr. Chazak, are you saying in the consent calendar and those staff reports?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Johnson?
I agree with Jeff and Kelly. I think the consent calendar under the department activity reports, this whole document is there every single meeting or maybe once a month, whatever. And then if anything requires our attention or action, it's pulled off. It's just placed on the agenda under old business or new business. But this just gets updated and it's included in the consent calendar, so we can review it every meeting, every meeting or once a month, whatever's, whatever's more convenient for Nick.
Thank you. The only question I have is, this covers a lot of items, so if it is in the consent calendar and then it comes up as a discussion item later on, does that cause an issue procedurally?
That's up to the council, or that's up to the chair to make that decision.
Okay. So no. I'm totally fine having it on the consent calendar. I think that's where it.
I agree.
Fits most.
President O'Day, a council member can always pull it from consent and ask about it. Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Administrator Bro, Administrator Broyles?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to respond to Councilman Chazak as far as Sourcewell. My official capacity with Sourcewell is on the Board of Trustees for the Better Health Collective. So my only official capacity with Sourcewell has to do with health insurance, but I will certainly, if you want updates on health insurance, I can certainly provide those updates.
Throw it in that report. I love it.
But, uh, it might get pretty dry, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? Sounds like you have direction. I don't think we have, need a motion on that. Um, going forward, next we have call for applicants. First, we have the mayor.
Yes, the following application, or applications for the following committees are available on our website. Water Commission, two terms expiring 2025, two terms expiring 2026. Housing reafor, uh, re, housing, let's try that again. Housing Redevelopment Authority, one term expiring 2027. Library Board, one term expiring 2027. Public Utilities Commission, one term expiring 2028. Transportation Advisory Committee, two terms expiring 2025, one term expiring 2026.
And as council president, I have two terms open for the Water Tower Committee. Next, we have number 10, that's new business. 10A, we have a resolution for the petition sufficiency and setting a public hearing for the North Ninth Street vacation. It's not the type of vacation you would think, but I believe this is, Mr. Habegorst?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Attached to this request is a resolution which declares the sufficiency of the attached petition to vacate a portion of North Ninth Street in North Brainerd submitted to, by St. Francis Church, the owner of the parcels adjacent to North Ninth Street between Juniper and Ivory Street. The res, the resolution simply declares the sufficiency of the petition to start the process of street vacation. This resolution accepts the petition from St. Francis Church and sets a public hearing to hear testimony for or against the said street vacation. After testimony is received, the public notice is mailed to effective residents. The city council will have a choice to vacate the right of way at the meeting on June 16th and, which will be after the public hearing takes place. Staff is recommending adopting the attached resolution which declares a petition to vacate portion of the Ninth Street and is sufficient and sets a public hearing for June 16th. Also, one correction on the actual resolution itself, uh, the third, the second paragraph is correct with the street description. The third paragraph is, needs to be modified. With that, I can take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Habegorst. So anyone have questions for staff? So this is just recognizing the petition. We're not actually vacating a street. So if you're still in that, um, in that thought that you're not comfortable with the vacation, that's not what this is for. This is just recognizing a petition. Johnson?
I've got a motion when you're ready.
Go for it.
I'd move to adopt the attached resolution with the corrected language as stated by Mike Habegorst.
Second.
Bevins?
Motion by Johnson, second by Bevins. And this is a resolution, uh, Johnson?
Yeah, I support the resolution stating that there is a sufficiency of a petition, but I do just want to let St. Francis know that I hope their public testimony at the public hearing is very compelling because I'm still not seeing why we should vacate that street. But since I'm just saying that this mo, this vote is just to say they sufficiently applied, which they did, I support this.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no further comments? Tony, please call the roll.
Chazak?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes, that resolution passes. Moving on to 10B, this is, uh, consideration for revising corner lot fence requirements. I know this, uh, this is both James Kramik and Councilman Gabe Johnson. Um, I think I'll, do you want to start this one, Johnson, or should I hand it over to James?
Let's see, uh, let's let James start it and I can, uh, clean up any messes he makes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. So Councilmember Johnson had a constituent reach out with concerns regarding fence standards, uh, specifically for corner lots. Uh, Councilman Johnson requested staff to add this request to, for council considerations. Uh, the email's included in the packet. So according to fence standards of the zoning code, fences may be located in any yard up to a height of four feet. A fence up to six and one half feet may be erected from a line extending from the front facade of the principal building to the side lot lines and then along the side lot lines and rear lot lines. So with, uh, corner lots, they have two facades as the house faces two streets. Uh, so corner property owners have consistently had issues with construction of backyard privacy fences. The fence often bisects a property, splitting the backyard in half. Um, there is a, um, aerial photo pictured in, um, as part of the attachment for this agenda request. So with that, staff recommends potentially some altered language for corner lots, specifically ones that are butting the alley. It would state, slight edit from the packet, um, that for corner properties, if the rear yard abuts an alley, a fence up to six and one half feet high may be erected from a line extending from the rear corner of the principal building to the side corner lot line and then along the side lot line to the rear lot line. Um, again, so staff, um, included the aerial depiction here. You'll see the first photo is what's currently allowed by ordinance, um, straight off the facade along, um, the, I guess the street to the north. You can see, um, the property on the left-hand side, it's about half the property that bisects it. Um, the one on the bottom, you're looking at about, about a quarters left for the backyard privacy fence. Uh, potentially with the, uh, new language, you'd be looking at the bottom one that would allow to go from the back corner of the principal structure out to the side corner lot line and then back to the rear yard. Uh, so with that, staff is seeking direction from council to draft an ordinance with the example language, uh, for planning commission consideration. And I can answer any questions.
Thank you, James. Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, no, James, thank you. You did a great job. And I think these pictures show it all. With our current ordinance for a six-foot fence, you have to stay straight with the house. This is built on a double lot and it's, and the house is built on the very southerly part of the property. So if they follow our ordinance, they are fencing in less than half of their backyard. They're losing the majority of their property from privacy and it's not really to any benefit. If they do, are able to build out to the property line, in this specific circumstance, if they're able to build out to the property line, it doesn't affect anybody else. So I thi, I think it should be allowed and I hope the council would support directing staff to look at it.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. My question, this has to do only with corner lots that have butted an alley. Cause I do live next to somebody who doesn't, we don't have an alley in between, but I could see them wanting to do this. Does that change anything for somebody that doesn't?
So really, I know, I know in your instance, that person's abutting your front yard. So there could be issues where you may not want to see a six-foot fence, a fence along your front yard. So they could request a variance, um, and then you'd have a, a chance to come in and certainly voice your concerns about it. So there's still instances where it could work, um, but again, they'd have to come in for a variance.
But this change wouldn't change that.
This change wouldn't change that, just with alleys.
Makes sense. Okay. Any more questions? Comments?
I'd move to approve the draft.
Second.
Motion by Chazak, second by Johnson. Any discussion? It's like, no. Let's go to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to 10C, this is a discussion of Brainerd Community Action beautification ideas. It looks, it sounds like we have somebody from Brainerd Community Action here tonight. Please introduce yourself, sir.
Dave Bedeau, Executive Director of Brainerd Community Action. Yeah, we've, uh, sent over two requests from the city. Both would include BPU as well, so there would need to be discussion on, uh, their end. Uh, I don't know which one you have first on your list here.
Banners.
Banners. Okay, let's start with banners. So, uh, last year, I believe it was, it was approached by, uh, at that time, County Administrator Hul, who had said, wouldn't it be nice if we, uh, created a banners program for our hometown heroes along Laurel Street between the city and the county buildings? Uh, something was just kind of put on the back burner. And then just recently, I had a second group, the Panda Project, who approached us and asked for a similar thing. So what I'm bringing forward to you guys is a request. Um, I think in terms of timing wise, what we would be interested in doing is, uh, May before Memorial Day through the Fourth of July, potentially to the end of the summer. Um, but we've got a photo there, if you've got it. I don't know if it made the packet or not. Look at that. There it is. Let's shrink that baby down. So along Laurel Street, we have the decorative lighting that is alongside, uh, both sides of the street. It is just in the portion from about City Hall or, excuse me, the, um, the, it's, let's, well, the word I'm looking for is post office. It took me a long time to get there, but I got there. Uh, from the post office down to the, about where the county garages are, it is just these poles that we're looking at. And specifically, every other set has the top bar for hanging a banner. The, the pole next to it, as you can see, that does not have a banner on it, that is for hanging baskets. So to start with, we're not interested in, in encroaching into that. What we're looking at is these poles that already have the existing hardware on the top. The problem is, is that those were set up with a triangle banner in mind. So there's just a hook down at the bottom or a loop. What we'd like to do is, uh, work with BPU to install the bracket on the bottom part, so we could have a full banner that is put into place and is held nice and strong. Um, and would give us a little bit more, uh, footage there in order to present the individual. Idea behind this would be that individuals would purchase a banner through the program for an individual, living or dead, that is, is or was in the military and that we would line the street with those every year. Uh, goal being that at the end of the year, we would take those down. People can have them as a keepsake with the option of putting them up the following year as well. Uh, cost, what we're looking to do is take on all the costs. The only thing we're asking is to have, uh, BPU potentially put them up. Cause I don't want to be in charge of putting things on to the light pole. If need be, we would gladly put those banners up them ourselves. I think we could handle that. Those light poles are very, um, short compared to our other light poles. So I don't think that we have time to do it this year. I think that this is something I'd like to make sure we get right. So I'm not asking to, you know, put the foot on the throttle and get this one done right away, but we'd just like the, um, approval from the council so that we can then take it to BPU, get their approval on what they might think on it and then start looking at what that would look like.
Excellent.
President O'Day, can I?
Chazak, go ahead.
Um, I, you said there's a picture of a banner in the packet?
Yes.
Is it a name of an individual?
Yes, so that's, ideally, that's what we'd like to see is, um, some kind of logo type that is consistent across all of them and then the name of the individual.
Is it first and last name?
Typically, yes. Sometimes they have, um,
Service there?
Service, you know, uh, different things from their various different branches. We haven't nailed down exactly what the look would be. And if the city's interested, we could represent that when we get to that stage as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have questions? Go ahead.
Okay, item number two also has a picture. I'm sorry, Jeff.
Oh, that's okay. Don't apologize.
So there's, there's just some examples that we found online that you guys can peruse at your own, uh, leisure. Various different ways it could look. Okay, item number two, eh, we were approached by a couple of local artists, uh, wanting to partner with us on a beautification project for, uh, electrical boxes in the downtown area. So we've got a lot of various different electrical boxes in, throughout the city. But it's unbelievable the amount of electrical boxes we have. Some of them are in really good condition. Some of them are in poor condition. Uh, and so we'd like to take a look at what it could potentially be to have an artist either paint directly on it or have some kind of wrapping done that is digital as well. Um, there is an image that we've put here. Uh, this is the one we're probably the most interested because it's the most visible. This is the one right next to the downtown sign, uh, right here at City Hall. Uh, the nice thing about these particular electrical boxes, these are slightly different than the other ones you'll see. And these are new and they look really nice right now. So it would be easy to wrap these. It'd be easy to paint on them. Um, a nice smooth surface. Some of the other ones are not in as nice of condition, uh, but maybe that would be where we start. Maybe we look at the ones that are a little bit rougher off. Maybe this is the better way to go. Um, but again, we're looking for approval from the city to then take it to BPU and see if they would be interested in. Uh, right now, both Chase Vreeland and Tony Powers, a couple of really, uh, cool local artists are, uh, interested in the project. I actually just got a text message from Chase right before I came up here, asking, uh, if, where we had gotten with it. And I just said, we're still looking, uh, to see where we could go with it.
Excellent. Anyone have questions? Jaeger?
I do. Uh, thank you, Mr. Bedeau. Um, uh, living in this town, I have come to the realization that, uh, what some people think looks good compared to what other people think looks good is vastly different. So my question is, do you have an idea of what I, what I like about the graphic wrap is it would give the ability to see it before it's done versus see it after it comes out of the creative mind. Uh, just want to get your thoughts on that, uh, because I do, I'm, I have a little bit of trepidation about just turning, uh, turning this type of work loose, that's all.
As an artist myself, I do not take offense to the idea that, uh, art can be very subjective. Uh, the, the advantage of the wrap is exactly what you said. You can create it. You can tweak it. You can make it look like what it is. There is, in the art world, there, you know, there's a lesser quality to that. It is not an individual piece. Uh, however, the other advantage is that it lasts a little bit longer as well. So the problem with painting things is that you're consistently going to be need to repainting them. So it would need to be something that is, uh, at least basic enough that can be touched up. Um, I think that the artist would be interested in whatever the city may be interested in. And I could also see there being two vastly different approaches to it. Uh, in the alley near Bremer Bank, there is a electrical box that is currently the color of rust brown because it is rust brown. Uh, that's probably a good example of one that could be quickly spray painted and, and turned into something a little bit nicer just to look nicer. Um, probably isn't the best use of a wrap. Um, but the, the only issue with the wrap is just a, a little bit of extra time and, and money for the installation. However, if that's what the city's interested, we've seen models that use that all over the place. So, is there another image? I don't know if I get, did I give you two images? Did I give you the one from, oh, there's without. Okay, hold on. Now let's do this. There's without. Now let's go back to with.
Oh, wow!
Blew your minds.
So I have a quick question. So the first one, the, the banners have a, a obvious theme, which I think is awesome. I've had this brought up to me before in private as well. And I know other towns do this. I think it's great. Uh, and I love the, the idea of the, the boxes getting painted or, or wrapped artistically. But is there a general theme you're looking for with that as well? Or is it just bring it, bring it forward to BPU, the council, see if it's approved one by one? Or how do you want to approach that?
The beauty of this is we can do whatever we want. So if that's what the city would like to see happen, I will gladly push them down that road. I personally would like to keep it with a small group of artists to start, so there's consistency around it. If it turned into something where we were bringing on other artists, I think that is something we'd have to look at again once we got there.
Thank you. Johnson?
Could we negotiate, like if we allow this, we get rid of the blue crosswalks?
What? Would anybody know? What? How would anybody know where to cross? Johnson, you had something?
Uh, no cost on the banners. Love that program. Love the cost to the city. I think it's a good way to honor our, uh, our family members who have served. Any cost with the wrapping the electrical boxes?
We would like to take on that cost completely, so.
You would like, so you would find benefactors, sponsors, artists?
Yeah, yeah. So, and, and obviously, paint way cheaper than wrapping it. Wrapping it will, I'm not someone that is a, a wrapping professional, not a busker, also not a wrapping professional. Uh, so I, we'd probably have to find someone to be able to do that. That would drive up the cost a little bit, but completely doable.
Yeah, so I, I think I support both, since there is no cost. I think it adds a little bit of vibrancy to downtown. You know, I was in Tri-Cities, Washington, a number of years ago, and they paint their electrical boxes, and it was just kind of cool that there was, every electrical box was different, different artist's vibe to it. But I, I also agree with Kevin that some art is ugly.
A lot of art is ugly.
So I, I would nominate Kevin to just, uh, be our approval person, because I do like his attention to detail.
I 100% do not accept that role.
Let's go with a cannabis theme.
You all, knowing our artists, you may get that.
There are cities that they do them all with organics. They look like plants, flowering plants. It's pretty cool. It's a pretty cool thing.
There's a lot, there was another image that, uh, maybe didn't make it, but there was, I was recently in Detroit Lakes and just happened to drive past one, and, uh, it, yep, it was very similar to what you're seeing there.
And I'll just throw this out. I served on the Five Wing Arts Council in the past, and one of the grants we gave was to an artist to do this exact work. I forget the name of the town, but there was some money that was given through the Five Wings Arts Council for this type of commission work, so.
And again, we'd like to start small. Find out from BP what they're interested in. You know, maybe they say, "Don't touch that. That's beautiful. We don't want you messing with it." But there are countless electrical boxes in the downtown area that we could take a look at.
All right. Are you, are you looking for just general approval? Um, are you looking for our staff to come up with something that, a document, some type of contract for this?
What I'd like to do is get approval from you guys to go to BPU and have that conversation with them, make sure that they're okay with it. And then if you need to, we can bring it back to you guys, but we'd like to get started. On the electrical boxes, we'd like to get started sooner rather than later.
President O'Day, I'd like to move a conceptual approval to give permission to Mayor Bedeau acting as the community action president?
Executive Director.
To move, to go to the Public Utilities Commission and ask them for their approval.
Second. Motion by Chesak, second by Jaeger. Any discussion on that motion? Johnson?
Yeah, I, I fully support it, but I like how the motion was worded because it's pretty much entirely BPU's realm. They, they, it's their boxes, it's their poles, it's their, so you definitely need their support on the project.
Yes.
You have mine.
Excellent. Any more discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bedeau. Next, we have number 11. This is staff reports. Start with Tony Gage. Anything? Chief Davis?
Nothing, yeah.
Nothing tonight? Sean Strong?
I'll just mention one quick thing here. Uh, tonight, we're job shadowing. CLC now has staff back on staff to televise the meetings, do the broadcasting back here. So this is Max. He's learning how this all works and will be, uh, taking on most of the meetings going forward, once he knows the ropes, so. Thanks.
Thank you, Sean. Welcome, Max. Connie Hillman? Mike Habegors?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Just to take a few minutes just to highlight some staff in our transit department. As you know, they're underneath, we have a consultant helping us with more efficiencies, and, uh, Crystal, Erin, and Amy are just doing a great job with all of those facets with that. And then recreation, we are having a fishing clinic this weekend, and Kayla's doing awesome with, uh, the baseball. You haven't heard any news, because I haven't heard anything. The, the, the schedules are working great. You wouldn't think it'd take a lot of work to get an 11-team schedule working perfectly, but after we printed out from our old program, we quickly realized that it needs a lot of work. And it is a little expensive, but we have something in the budget to help with that. And then, uh, parks, you have, if you haven't been out to JC Park and Buffalo Hills Park, we're doing a lot of improvements there. Also at Lum Park, um, just want to highlight some of those. Troy has been doing a great job with getting everything up to par and keep the input coming, our concerns, just email, text, whatever it is that, that you can do. I, we just need that input to take care of our parks. Also Streets is helping out our parks with some critical, uh, items, and we're working with HR and finance, creating job codes for our streets and our park guys to go back and forth, not necessarily cross training, but just job sharing, if you will, just to get some things, critical things done. So that's really awesome. And then you've all heard about our engineering with our construction projects. Um, Jesse's done a great job with that, and Eric and James are working really well with that. And then Lisa, with our, with our admin function, she's just keeping everything organized really well. So I just want to highlight a few staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Habegors. Mr. Kramik?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to highlight the upcoming agenda for the Planning Commission. This Wednesday will be quite busy. Uh, we have a public hearing to consider preliminary plat, final plat rezoning, and CUP for St. Francis, uh, School and Church. Hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance amendment for outdoor sales. That was directed by City Council. Uh, hold a public hearing, consider proposed ordinance to amend parking requirements in the General Industrial District and Park District. Consider a variance, uh, for an accessory structure at Teen Challenge on Greenwood Street, and then review and amended allowed use table to create less restrictions for businesses. That's everything.
Thank you, James. Mr. Engel?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Chris Schuber? Administrator Broyles?
Thank you, Mr. President. Quickly, in the same vein as what Mike said, I just want to communicate to the council, you guys have got a great staff. Uh, you've got an amazing staff, and that staff begins with great directors, and I just want to assure the council that the directors come into work every day and they're focusing on what they can do to deliver services to the public, and they're very professional. Uh, they put up with me. They're just fantastic. I do want to, you know, and I, I want to point out, or I want to single out Tony Gage. You know, as we've been working through this, this, we've been teasing this monthly report for a while, the suspense tracker for a while. Tony has been instrumental. I am not an IT genius, and she is, so Tony has been instrumental in putting this together. So I just want to say thank you, Tony, for your dedication to the city of Brainerd. It's much appreciated.
All right. Thank you, Administrator Broyles. Mr. Mayor? Oh?
Eric.
Eric Sharpton here, the invisible one. Anything today?
Nothing this evening, Mr. President.
Nothing this evening?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Eric. Mayor Bedeau?
Yes. Busker do or busker don't? The choice is up to you, folks. You may, you may not. That's up to you. Uh, Park Board had its, uh, priority meeting, much like you guys did. You guys met, you set your priorities. Park Board did the same, went very well. I think staff was happy with the results in terms of getting some direction. I think Park Board was able to come together, hash a few things out, shake a little rust off, make sure we're all in the same direction, so that was good. Uh, other than that, June 5th, it was on your agenda today. We now have concerts in the park, ladies and gentlemen. Seth Dowd, Angie Stevens, June 5th, Lyman P. White, 5:30 to 8:30, being brought to you by Jack Pine Brewery, once again, folks. So the folks of Jack Pine will be making their way across the river to the right side and serving some beer for you at your leisure, 5:30 to 8:30, Lyman P. White Park, Seth Dowd. Special guest, Angie Stevens. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's start with, uh, Mr. Chesak.
Nothing tonight, mister.
Nothing tonight? Stunek?
I have nothing.
Jaeger?
Yes, airport.
Oh, okay.
Uh, Mr. Broyles, uh, did touch on this. I'll try to be as brief as I can, although it was a flurry of activity out there over the past, uh, couple weeks. On May 6th, um, this Tuesday, May 6th, the commission did receive a letter of resignation from Mr. Steve Wright, who is our current, uh, acting director out there. At that time, the commission called a special meeting with the, the highest degree of rapidity that we could, uh, given that it was still an open meeting and that we needed to notice this. So a follow-up meeting, uh, happened on May 15th, um, in which the commission did, uh, accept the resignation with tremendous regret, uh, of Mr. Steve Wright, our, our, uh, leader who's been out there for, for quite some time. Uh, we also did agree to the separation agreement that was, uh, put forth with Mr. Wright, so we have a, uh, clean break there. Um, and, um, whom, whatever Mr. Wright's path is in the future, if that is in aviation, another airport, uh, they will be very, uh, very lucky to get a, a tremendous leader and, uh, a gifted person in that, in Mr. Wright. So we wish him absolutely all of the best. Uh, that being said, we are without a, uh, airport director. We're without an airport deputy director. So I have been acting as the interim to the interim to the interim director, I guess, for the last, uh, couple, uh, weeks here. Um, basically, I go out there every single morning, just kind of address the staff and see if there's any documentation that needs to be signed and so forth. Uh, as we did decide in the last meeting, we'll be advertising for our new IAD, uh, hopefully tomorrow. That, uh, that has been draught, that was drafted over the weekend and has been reviewed by, um, the HR on both sides, uh, today, and it does look like, uh, we will be posting the, uh, advertisement for our, our new IAD, uh, tomorrow, and we're hoping to close that, um, about a week from now. Uh, we've had already a robust turnout of people who are interested in, uh, helping us out, out there, uh, both as an interim director as well as a long-term director, but we've decided to focus just on the interim position for right now. Uh, a subcommittee was established at our, at that, uh, May 15th meeting, where we will, uh, narrow the grouping down to about three or four key candidates, hopefully, and we will present those to the full airport commission at our next meeting, that's June 5th, and the airport commission will have the ability to interview those applicants, and hopefully, right on the spot, we will make a decision with a, a new interim director, uh, which is tentatively planned to be active at our airport from anywhere from two to 12 months. Uh, following up with that, we will then be diving into, pretty deeply into exactly what the commission sees for our new, the, the vision for our new director. So as opposed to just trying to advertise for both, we really want to take our time with this, make sure that we are bringing our new director in with good, clean, concise, uh, deliverable as far as what we expect out of this person, and moving forward, and we are also looking for a long-term person, uh, to, to guide us and to, to lead us through what will no doubt be difficult times ahead, uh, financially for the airport, as, as I'm sure a lot of you have known. Uh, so, um, with that being said, I do want to just, uh, call out a couple people. Uh, Jessica Ruling over the past, uh, week to 10 days has just been phenomenal. She has, uh, gone above and beyond the normal call of duty to help us with, uh, so, a, a few key FAA, um, credentials that were needed. Uh, also, Cassandra Loftus at, with our friends at, uh, St. Cloud has been helping out as well, and the staff out there has just been fantastic. The morale is super high, the, the, you know, the future, future's bright, and we're all looking forward to, uh, to moving forward out there, um, with, uh, with the airport. Uh, so, um, that's all I really have, although I did want to say that I love the use of the word suspense tracker and action officers. If we could get like DEFCON rolled in there or some kind of that kind of military type stuff, that'd be great too, but I do like, uh, the direction that we're going with that, and that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jaeger.
Put on the lease, put on the list, chief, action officers.
Yes. Mr. Bevins?
I don't even know what to say after Mr. Jaeger. I mean,
It's a tough one.
Save the world, did that, filled in for the airport director, filled in for President Trump, filled in for this.
I filled in for the mayor last week.
Thank you.
I did one thing, and one thing only, and that's, as you may not know, every year we get a financial audit, and the whipcracker, Hillman drags one of us in and locks us into the chair with the auditors, six of the meanest people you have ever met, and they go through everything on what you know about our city finances, and you confess to everything. And I did, and I'm probably going to get fried, but so far, it looks good. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Bevins. Chairman Erickson?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. It's a, a busy evening meeting week for me. Uh, both my committee's assignments meet later this week. Um, James already mentioned Planning Commission, uh, Wednesday, and then the following evening, Region 5 Development Commission, and, um, looking forward to participating and attending both those meetings.
I know.
Mr. Erickson? Chairman Johnson?
Nothing to add.
All right.
Good answer.
Thank you. I will say, uh, I wanted to recognize the, the four people from our fire department, our, our crew that we sent up north. I, I was going to ask the fire chief if he was here tonight, if that fires out. I'm not sure if officially is or not.
No.
They haven't had as much rain as we did tonight.
Contained.
But one, it's highly contained now, but when those emergencies happen, if we don't help out, we can't expect others to help us out in those emergency situations that we can't control. So thank you to that crew. Um, I do want to recognize the Public Works crew. Uh, Mr. Habegor sent us out a long list of spring activities that they are undertaking right now. They're doing a great job. Uh, I think we had a little delay on our, our plantings. After we had a 94-degree weekend, we now have frost warnings multiple nights in a row, so it's probably best we held off on those, but looking forward to seeing those plantings go, uh, baskets going out, our boulevards getting cleaned up, replanted, and, and everything's going to look real nice real soon, and they're hard at work. So thank you to that whole crew. Um, tomorrow morning, I, I was invited to a, uh, leadership breakfast at Essentia. Looking forward to learning whatever it is that we're going to learn there. That'll be my first one, so, um, that's all I have for my report, but. Mr. Chesak?
I'd like to wish everybody a happy Memorial Weekend.
Yes, I'll second that. Happy Memorial Weekend, everybody. Uh, we're just looking for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motion by Chesak and Stunek?
Jeff, you're going to have to have a talk here.
We say motion by Chesak, second by Stunek. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against, same sign. We are adjourned.
No, no after-meeting meeting?
Oh, can't we go into closed session for something?
For something?
Let's talk about the annex again.